Good morning and welcome to the Land Realization Authority Board of Commissioners Meeting, LRA Meeting, and I would like to call this meeting to order. First, I'd like to just introduce myself. My name is Gail Brown, Commissioner Gail Brown, and I will run the meeting in the absence of our chair who is not in today. Also, I would like to acknowledge, and if she can make herself present, our Commissioner Vow, can you make her?
No.
Hello, I'm here today.
Very good. With that, as we said, we'll open the meeting, and after the minutes, full of the minutes, we will ask if there's anyone that would like to speak, whether they're online or in person. So, we have the minutes that have been presented to the commissioners prior to the meeting, and I'd like to move that we accept the minutes of the August 30th meeting. If I could have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. No motion carries. With that, I'd like to open the meeting up to anyone, whether they be online or here in person that has registered and signed up to speak on behalf of one of the offers. So is there anyone that is online? I see I'm here. If you could announce yourself and tell us which parcel that you're speaking on, we would appreciate that.
You're allowed to speak, they will unmute themselves.
If you could unmute yourself, please, and speak. You are allowed to speak.
Hello, hello. I'm not sure if you're referring to me, or if you guys can hear me or not.
Yes, we can hear you, and we are referring to you if you put "I'm here" in the chat.
Oh, I did, okay, okay. I'm looking, bear with me for a moment. If someone's prepared, I just logged in, I would come right behind them. If there's anyone else, if not, I'll try and wing it as best I can.
Okay, if you could state your name and address and apartment that you're speaking on?
Orlando Askins is my name. I am dual residence. I'm at 212 Merrimack, Clayton, 63105. I don't have all the addresses directly in front of me. One of the addresses is 2915 Minnesota, and I believe that should be tied in with the other projects as well.
Okay.
There we go, 3190 Nebraska, Iowa, Ohio, Texas, and Minnesota.
Okay, thank you.
So, what I wanted to do is just pretty much introduce myself, give an explanation of what happened last year and what we intend to do going forward. We had options, and it was a bit of miscommunication and purely our fault. We take full responsibility, but we had options on these lots with the intent to build single-family residence on each of them. As you know, some of these things take a little time to get all of the bearings in place, all of the parties in place, and get drawings and proposed drawings. We were working on those things, in fact, made headway. We invested the initial fee last year when we were awarded these lots, but when the extension came up, again, take full responsibility. I personally was gone for around six weeks. The mail came in, it was a stack of it. When we responded, we were one week late in responding to extend the existing option that we had. So we were told, which, again, we take responsibility, and we have no problem with it. All of our information has not changed. None of our information has changed financially or interest, and we had to start the process over because we were told that being a week behind or a week late in the response, it had been put back on the market for other parties to potentially bid on it. So the exact same properties, nothing has changed for us, other than one year just getting everything in line wasn't enough, which is why I guess you guys typically do a two-year, a 24-month option. So just reapplying, nothing, again, has changed, same intent, same intention.
Okay, and you're Mr. Atkins, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and have you received community input on this project?
So we were told that we needed that, apparently, well, last year when we did it, we didn't need it. We've done, started, we started the process of getting that. I spoke with a young lady by the name of Lisa, I believe, before yesterday, and she gave me the contact points. We were initially told that Ben Park West did not have an active or acting board. So we hadn't, we didn't really know where to go with that, and we were told that if they didn't have one, then obviously we didn't need to do it, but I was informed yesterday, or day before yesterday, I should say Monday, that they do in fact have a active board, so I've reached out to them, I believe, Tuesday, Monday evening, and I'm still waiting to hear back from them. So we have no problem with working with them, and what our intent to build is just a basic two-story brick residence. But as of yet, we have not heard back from them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we appreciate your overview and comments. That's very helpful. We'll take that into consideration.
Yes.
Is there anyone else?
Christina Roberts, the one who discussed number 16 on the agenda.
Okay, Christina Roberts. Ms. Roberts, are you unmuted? If you could present number 16, please.
Yes, I'm here. Is everyone able to hear me?
Yes, we are.
Perfect, so I was able to submit the, wait, there's gonna be a little feedback, sorry about that. So I was able to submit the offer to the LRA at the beginning of September. I know there was probably some issues with the community-based organization letter, but since then, I've worked back with the, with the neighborhood manager and the manager at the LRA to, so we can facilitate some type of order, some type of community-based organization and working in partnership with Better Family Life, but I also have a letter of support from Better Family Life as well. So it's my hope that, once you guys see the full application, and let me know if any questions arise, we can move forward with the development purchase.
Okay. All right, we don't have it yet. All right, thank you.
Did anyone have any questions about anything I just said?
Yes, yes.
Ms. Roberts, this is Lance Snuckles, Director of Real Estate. So my question is, so I hear you engage with community, but have you had an opportunity to send that information down to the office as of yet, ma'am?
Yes, it's all been submitted. So I submitted the full package to the office. It included three letters of support, as well as the neighborhood consent in the full application.
Okay.
The neighborhood managers coordinating, setting up a community organization within Hamilton Heights, because at that time, there was no person I could go to directly for the additional information that was requested, and it looks like they're gonna use Better Family Life as that anchor in the community to kind of facilitate that, and I had already spoken with them and got a letter of support from them as well.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. And we may have to, not may, the letter of support that Better Family Life provided you, if we're going to use them as kind of the community partner, there's a different form that they would complete for that, and so we'll make sure that that gets reconciled on this opportunity.
Awesome, thank you, I appreciate it.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the overview. Is there, are there any other speakers?
Okay, so we have Ms. Kelly in person for item number 20.
Item number 20.
Do you want Ms. Kelly to go to the podium?
Yes, please.
Good morning, I'm Laoretta Kelly. And I reside at 2706 Rucker, and I am here for the lot next door to my home, 2700 Rucker. I still want a bid to LRA about this lot. I talked to the people in the community. I supposedly, they have sent a community letter here. I told them what I wanted to do with the lot.
Could you speak up a little bit, and if you could just start over?
Okay.
The mic doesn't want to go, you have to project it, you have to sound right here, so if you can just project it.
Okay. I'm Laoretta Kelly. I reside at 2706 Rucker Street, and I'm here on behalf of the lot at 2700 Rucker, which is right next door to my home. I put a bid into LRA on this lot. I was able to talk to the people in the community about the lot, and they told me that they did not see it was a problem with me adding on to my home, and that they were sending a letter. I'm here to find out how that is going, and if I would be eligible to purchase a lot.
She's seen item number 20, Commissioner, and so we do have everything we need to go on and make a decision.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Okay. Are there any other, okay, presenting, sorry about that. Hearing no additional presentations, we'll move along on our agenda, and ask if there are, if Commissioner Vow, if she has any report from the commissioner? If there's a report from Commissioner Vow?
No report at this time, thank you.
And I have no report. So with that, we'll begin with our offers to purchase. First, in our category of offers to purchase, we have the new constructions, and our offers to purchase are parcels owned by LRA that consist of unoccupied ground or physical structures. The offers have submitted offers to purchase with the intention of rehabbing properties as residential or commercial projects, an extension of their yards, community gardens, or green spaces to beautify the community. And before I do that, I need to make a roll call.
Actually, no, I think we wanted to reconsider the votes to clarify as before.
Okay. All right. Prior to going into new construction, we have one action here, and that's the action items to, items to reconsider. Parcel number five, item number five, number eight, number 11, number 15, number 17, number 18, number 19, and number 20. So.
From the last meeting, correct? Just for clarification of the motion?
Yes, and, yes, I move to reconsider items number five, eight, 11, 15, 17, 18, 19, and 20.
Second?
It's been moved in second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Yes.
And motion carries. Okay, now we'll move on to the new construction, new construction program. These are Class A lots that have a minimum of 4,000.
Sorry, just a point of clarification, the ones that have been moved to reconsider, are they on today's agenda, or will they be on the next agenda for reconsideration? Or do we need to take a vote on them now? Just.
Commissioner, they're on today's agenda.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure that we were on the same page, thank you.
Commissioner, I was on the same page as well. I was gonna just make sure that the audience was aware that that reconsideration of those items will be considered in today's meeting. Mr. Brown, it's back to you.
All right, thank you, okay. All right, so new construction, our first item under this category, we have parcels 6048 Maple Avenue, 6052 Maple Avenue, and 6054 Maple Avenue, Renish Basal, and Rahali Tolu, and like to make that motion, I'd like to move to defer this offer until we have community input.
Second?
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, under this category, we have 3965 Inright Avenue, 3969 Inright Avenue, 3971 Inright Avenue. I move that we reject this offer due to condition of existing city-owned property. Do I have a second?
Just a minute, bear with me, I'm checking my notes. I've got two different screens going. Second?
It's been moved in second. If we can approve by signifying aye.
Abstain?
All right, so.
That does not pass.
Yeah, it doesn't pay attention. Okay. So.
So it's just, it's gotta be deferred as much as good. If it fails, they're gonna get deferred. Unless there's an alternative.
We can have a new motion to defer.
I would say unless there's an alternative motion, it just, it just.
Okay. I move that we defer item number two, 3965 Inright, 3969, and 3971 Inright, and we defer it next meeting.
Second.
And second, those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next on our agenda, we have item number three, that was just presented earlier, that contains of multiple properties that you see here from, that's listed in Exhibit A from Shaw Holding Group. We understand that there is community input. We need to review that, and we like to defer item number three for community input.
Second?
It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Next, we have the Ask Is Rehab Program. These are Class A residential buildings up to six units, no more than one building with no more than two contiguous lots or one commercial building. So first, in this category, we have 5321 Wells Avenue, offered by Jason E. Ferguson, and I move that we defer this particular, we do have community support, I mean, we have community input, right?
Second?
No, no, one second. I wanted to, I wanted to speak with.
So Commissioner Brown and Commissioner Vow.
Two minutes. Okay, go ahead.
I can speak to it.
Go ahead.
So item number, item number four, the offer submitted by James E. Ferguson has conducted some community engagement, commissioners, and the community support was not provided on the project. So it is information for you all to have, that the housing committee for that community did not support this project, and that's information that you ought to use for you to make a finer determination. But the community, they have conducted community engagement, and the letter of non-support was provided from community.
I'm sorry, I'm just still having trouble reconciling what constitutes community support, because we have some of these groups that are driven by aldermanic entities, some are driven by certain nonprofits, and some are community residents or nearby businesses. And it just seems not like a unified process, and we don't have an official mechanism by which we can recognize something as community support or not community support.
So Commissioner Vow, I will speak to that directly. In the event of us engaging community engagement, the notion there is no official community engagement infrastructure in this city, so your desire to move in that direction is not something that this body can control. We do, however, allow community engagement to come in all forms as a part of our protocol, that is, whether it's a housing committee that a automatic leader convenes but does not control, or it can be a community nonprofit partner who has a vested interest in community, and/or it can be established development review committees and/or committees that represent work that's moving in a community. It is not this body's position to determine what constitutes engagement, but provide information to this body that comes from community, and ensuring that you are aware of where that information comes from. There is no legislation currently moving at the Board of Aldermen to define or describe an official engagement protocol for this city.
Okay, I just wanna be sure that we're very clear when we say community engagement, that we, like what you just explained there, that the public understands that, that it comes in all forms, and that, you know, there is not necessarily one specific unified factor, because it seems a lot of times like we're operating on, oh, well, we've gotta wait for this housing committee to convene, or we've gotta wait for this organization to convene, when really, it is, everybody has an equal voice, is what I'm hearing from you right now, and it is up to the commissioners to decide which voice should be, should prevail, I guess.
With that understanding, I move that we reject the offer due to lack of community support. Do I have a second?
Second?
All that favor, roll call, roll call.
Commissioner Brown?
Gail, yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we have 4732 Newcombe Place, presented by Jasmine Marie Noble. I move that we defer this offer pending community support. Do I have a second?
Defer and wait for community-driven input, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, second.
Previous roll. Next, hearing no, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item number six, 5219 Beacon Avenue, presented by Chastity Benoit, and I move to accept the offer of $1,500 with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing.
Second?
It's been moved in second, previous roll. Hearing no objection, motion carries. Item number seven, 5511 Partridge, presented by Craig Arnold. I move to accept offer of $1,000 with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing.
Second?
It's been moved in second, previous roll, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item number eight, 5071 Beacon, presented by AJ Slater Enterprise. I move to defer this action pending community-driven input support and support. Do I have a second?
Second?
It's been moved in second, previous roll, hearing no objection.
No, I said no objection, sorry.
This offer of point of information, to just make sure that you are all aware that that property is freshly convened. So as they move forward, it's information that needs to be provided to them in their operation.
Okay. Thank you. Item number nine, 5217 North 21st Street, offered by Christopher Sharp. I move to accept the offer of $10,000 with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing.
Second?
It's been moved in second, previous roll, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item 10, 5041 Genneby Avenue. I move to defer offer pending community input and support.
Second?
It's been moved in second, previous roll, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item 11, 931 Arlen Avenue, Kenneth D. Sims. I move to accept the offer with close, of $1,000 with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing.
Second?
It's been moved in second, previous roll, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item 12, we have multiple parcels presented by, offered by Eric Mason, and they're listed in Exhibit A, they're move to reject offer due to the project not being in alignment with the community direction. Do I have a second?
Second with discussion. There is also a community letter of support from another organization in addition to a letter of non-support from an organization. So this is where we get into that, you know, really needing to see what those reasons are and understand both sides before we make a decision. So I would like to offer to, I would like to request to defer this and review both sides, I guess, of the letter of support and the letter of non-support, so that we can make an informed and conscientious decision.
All right, I will withdraw my motion to reject the offer, and I move to defer the offer for additional, uh, consideration of community support.
Um, original second withdrawn and new second issued.
Okay. Then, previous roll, previous roll. Hearing no objection, motion carries. Item number thirteen is third, I'm sorry, sixty thirteen Emma Avenue and sixty thirty-three Emma Avenue, offered by Melanie Briggs. I move to accept offer of two thousand dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing.
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous roll, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item number fourteen, there are multiple properties on Pleasant Street, presented by Otis Brooks. I move to accept offer of three thousand dollars with closing, uh, I'm sorry, I move to accept offer, uh, of three thousand dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing.
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous roll, hearing no objection, motion carries. Our next category is under the heading of development. Development program are offers for parcels owned by LRA that consist of physical structures for the rehab and/or construction of any combination of the following. Rehab and/or construction of mixed-use buildings, rehab and/or construction of multiple residential buildings, rehab of residential buildings with more than six units, and/or commercial products. Uh, the first item in this category, item number fifteen, four twenty-five Blasey, uh, uh, so known as seventy-eight fifty North Broadway, presented by Minton Jane. I move to counter this offer for the amount of twenty-one thousand five hundred and seventy-three dollars with closing contingent upon approval of budget and financing.
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous roll. Hearing no objection, motion carries. Next, in this category, we have fifty-six fifty-one Paige, uh, presented and offered by Christina D. Roberts. Uh, we heard some information, uh, today that we need to, uh, review. Uh, we would like to defer, uh, for the review and will, uh, take this up in your next meeting. Uh, so I move to defer.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Hearing, okay, previous roll. Hearing no objection, motion carries. Next item, we have, uh, multiple properties on Oriole, and it's presented by Mia Maya Program. And you can see those items listed there in Exhibit A. Uh, we move to, in consideration of the information presented, we move to defer, uh, defer this offer for further engagement with the incentive team. Do I have a second?
Second with discussion or question. Um, I think there's probably a question for Lance. Um, can you explain a bit about what the incentive team is, who, who that is, and what their purpose is? That's the first time I've seen that come up on the agenda, and I feel members of the public may not have seen that up before either.
Yeah, so Commissioner, thank you for the question. Our incentives team is a team within SODC that works to support providing development projects and residence who are seeking tax abatement and/or other tax opportunities to support development. And so this is the project that we are recommending to engage in that conversation, to explore feasibility to support the project, uh, being able to move forward. And so it is just a great opportunity for this project to get additional support per conversation with them and how the project has been moving forward.
Thank you. And does that include, um, state and federal incentives as well as local incentives? Um, so they're, they're well-versed in all of the, the grants and federal funds available to developers or community residents as well?
Commissioner, that is not the responsibility of the incentives team to manage state and federal programs. Uh, our team manages the programs within our stewardship. We do offer recommendation for folks to explore those options.
Got it. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. It's been moved. Okay, previous roll. Hearing no objection, motion carries. Next category of authors. I'm under the Lot Purchase Program, and the General Lot Purchase Program provides guidelines for the sale of LRA lots for any purpose other than new construction, building, rehab, or development. So first, in this category, we have here, um, item eighteen forty-one forty-nine Dr. Martin Luther King. Uh, in consideration of the information that we've been presenting, I'm moving to.
Commissioner, would you offer, um, offer like a point of information?
Sure, please.
Um, in, in speaking to, um, Commissioner Vow in a previous discussion, uh, the community engagement, uh, for this included information, uh, of non-support from the Ville Neighborhood and also non-support from the Greater Ville Neighborhood Association as the two bodies of information of community engagement that was brought forth. And, and Commissioner Vow, I thank you for ensuring that we offer the perspective of where that engagement came from, which is me responding very swiftly to ensure that this body is aware of where that community of either community support or non-support is coming from.
Thank you. I appreciate that context.
Given the information presented before us and the letters of non-support, I move that we reject the purchase offer, uh, from Ashley Settle for forty-one forty-nine Dr. Martin Luther King.
And just, second, and just with discussion. Um, could you refresh my memory on when we last, uh, when we did the agenda prep? There were no letters of support from any entity, community business or otherwise that were submitted with this application, with this offer?
Commissioner Vow, this is, uh, Director Knuckles. Uh, we have not, in the office or staff have not received any letters of support. Uh, I believe there was active engagement done for this effort, uh, and the only responses that came were the two, two letters of non-support from both the For the Ville Community Neighborhood Association as well as the Greater Ville Neighborhood Association.
Thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
It's been moved in second. Uh, in question, um, hearing no other further discussion, um, previous roll, hearing no objection. Motion carries. Uh, item number nineteen, fifty-seven thirty-four Agnew Avenue, offered by Tennessee Robinson. Move to defer any decision pending community-driven input and community support.
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous roll. Hearing no objection, motion carries. Item number twenty. We have twenty-seven hundred Rutgers, and that is, uh, presented by Loretta Kelly. And hearing information that we've been presented, uh, move to, uh, accept, uh, this offer.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Uh, hearing, uh, pre- it's been moved in second, previous roll. Hearing no objection, motion carries. Item number twenty-one, nineteen forty Arlington, presented by Willie and Gloria Young. Move to reject offer due to potential future development. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
David, help me out here. If we would like this to be reconsidered, um, would I second and then ask for discussion? And then offer an alternate motion to defer until all three commissioners are present?
I think that's fine.
Gail, would you be okay with that?
Yes.
All right, um, second then, and, uh, with, with discussion and the suggestion that we defer.
All right, I'm.
And if that's the case, then I think you would withdraw your motion here.
I withdraw my motion, and I make.
An alternative motion.
I make, okay, I make alternative motion to defer item number twenty-one nineteen forty Arlington for future consideration.
I withdraw my original second, and I second your new motion.
All right, it's been moved in second. Previous roll. Hearing no objection, motion carries.
Uh, Commissioner Brown, I have a request to have the commission go back to item number twenty.
Okay.
Um, within the package, there was not a purchase price mentioned in the motion, nor did we include the plan, budget, and finance for that. And so.
I thought I heard that. Can you, yeah, clarify, please?
Okay. Going back to item number twenty. Um, ask, uh, that as a commissioner, uh, I move to withdraw the acceptance of item number twenty. And I'll make a new motion of item twenty. The first I'd like. To reconsider. Okay. So it's been, okay. Um, it's been moved in second, previous roll, hearing no objection, motion carries. Now, I'd like to make a new motion to counter, um, the offer for, uh, twenty-seven hundred Rutgers uh, for a, an amount of six thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars. Do I have a second for the counter?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous roll. Hearing no objection, motion carries. Okay.
Yeah, clarify that.
To clarify that, okay, okay. It's contingent upon budget plans and financing. We're good?
Yeah, there's no rejection.
Okay, no objection. I think just, just a clarification. Okay, next. All right, next, we have sixteen hundred through oh eight Old Mount. And I move to defer this offer pending community-driven input and community, and committee support.
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous roll, hearing no objection, motion carries. Item number twenty-three. Uh, we have three addresses before us, nineteen oh one Bell Glade, nineteen oh three Bell Glade, and nineteen oh nine Bell Glade. Considering information presented to us from the community committee and input, I move to reject the offer. Do I have a second?
Um, second with one question.
Okay.
Um, same as the, the question for the, this offer's previous item on our agenda. Were there any letters of support provided from any other institutions, neighbors, or businesses in the area?
Commissioner Vow is the Director Knuckles. Uh, had the other offer, the engagement was conducted, uh, in community, and the two organizations that responded to her engagement activity were the Ville, which provided a letter of non-support for the offer, as well as the Greater Ville Association, which responded with the non-support letter for the project.
So no one replied in support, is what I'm just, I'm trying to make sure there was no one else that replied in support of this?
That, that is correct, Commissioner, that, that there were no other responses from engagement except the two responses that were provided through her engagement activity with those two organizations.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
It's been moved in second, and if there are no more questions, uh, cause the previous roll. Hearing no objection. Motion carries. Next, on our agenda, we have the side lot program. And these are parcels owned by LRA that consist of unoccupied ground that are too small to support new construction. These non-buildable lots are parcels that are less than four thousand square feet and cannot be contiguous to another LRA parcel. These lots are made available and affordable to adjacent property owners to be used as a side lot and expand personal property. First, on our list here.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Brown and Commissioner Vow, uh, as relates to side lot program items number twenty-four and twenty-five. Uh, we are in possession of the results of engagement activity conducted by Charles J. Wheeler on item twenty-four, as well as engagement for Khalil Matan, uh, on item number twenty-five. For item number twenty-four, the Hyde Park Neighborhood Association provided a letter of non-support for this project, and they have been actively engaged in the neighborhood planning process. As well as item number twenty-five, uh, we have received, uh, a non-support letter from the Greater Ville Neighborhood Association, um, based upon some of the activity of the existing owner within community. So I wanted to provide that context for both those items. Typically, side lots do not come to this body. Uh, but in this moment in time, I thought it was important to bring these to you to understand that in these cases, there's not community support. And in one of these options, or one of these offers, is the desire to put a parking lot on a side lot, which not, which is not eligible use for item number 25. So I answer any other questions, but I wanted to make sure I was thoughtful in providing intelligence for this body to make a sound decision.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
So just a question on the, did you say the side lots do not typically come before this body?
Side lots typically do not come before this body. We have identified parcels that fit the side lot program. And this body has approved and accepted, I can't remember the number of parcels, that are managed by staff. In the event that there's parcels that may be either one in, I'll say just slightly over 4,000 square feet, or in a precarious kind of situation, if you will, we bring those to this body to make sure that you're aware of how we're wanting to move on the disposition of those parcels.
Got it.
Exact date, but I believe in February or March, at some point is when we adopted the side lot program. And that program had a list of all the parcels that meet the criteria. And as we further investigate into our inventory deeper, we identify these, some parcels that were not included. And so we attempt to do our very best to bring them back with this body.
So the ones that we have voted on before under the side lot purchase were those strange ones, not just the, the typical ones that go through with staff?
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Got it. All right. So with respect to these being, well, I guess we need to motion first and then discussion.
But I just want to provide that clarity before you all move into your deliberation.
Sure. In light of the information that we have before us and that has been presented and clarified, I moved, move on item number 1409 Salisbury that we reject the offer. Do you have a second?
If it receives no second, it goes nowhere and it comes back up on an agenda? Or it is neither accepted or rejected? How does that work, parliamentary, David?
It's, it's, it's going to have, yeah, obviously no action takes place today and it will just have to come back on the next agenda.
Okay. Either no second at this time, or I would recommend we defer to gain more understanding of why it received a non-support letter when it seems to fit the spirit of our side lot program. And this person seems to be an upstanding neighbor. Their property is stated by our own analysis as being in excellent condition. So I would just be curious to know the neighborhood association's rationale behind not supporting that?
I withdraw my motion and I move to defer this offer, item number 24, 1409 Salisbury. Do you have a second?
Yes, I second, I, I withdraw my original second and I resecond your new stated motion.
Previous roll. Hearing no objection, motion carries. Item 25, I move to reject offer in consideration of information that has been presented to us by the various neighborhood organization.
Second with discussion.
Okay. Go ahead.
I guess my question is, how did this end up being, being submitted as a side lot? Because it's so, as Lance pointed out, it so glaringly goes against what the side lot program was designated for and the designated use doesn't seem to meet that. So is there another offer mechanism by which they could place an offer and still conduct that same community engagement, but not call it a side lot? Because clearly, if they're going to build a parking lot for their commercial business, that doesn't really seem like a side lot.
So. Yeah, so Commissioner, it seems as though they have already gone before the Greater Bill Neighborhood and they provided non-support. And it was not only due to the use, but also some activity in being in compliance.
No, I totally understand that. And I, I get the rationale there and I know exactly where they're talking about. But I'm just wondering how in our procedures, this ended up on the side lot list? This is one of those weird ones, I guess, but how, how were they able to submit an offer as a side lot, I guess, is what I'm trying to understand?
It wasn't on the sideline list. There are some, oh, this is the net of this, ma'am. There are some properties that we have in our inventory that in our transfer did not make it on the sideline list. It qualifies, but it does, it's not on there. So when one is found, then they, it has to go before the commissioner because it was never approved on the original sideline list.
Okay, so it's just categorized under side lots on this agenda, but it's not actually on our side lot inventory list?
So Commissioner, let me provide another layer of clarity and I'll try to speak clearly because you may not have heard a miswrite, is this is a parcel that meets the qualification for a side lot list? Side lot parcel, however, in, we've done a data transfer from GOSTL into City Works. And in that, we have found that the data migration did not capture all of those parcels. And so because this parcel was not approved within the side lot program, Commissioner, back in February or March, it has to come back before this body because it's not identified in the pre-approved list of side lots that you all have approved through your decision-making previous.
I think I understand. I just wanted to kind of tease that out for members of the public who may be listening as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. There's motion for you second. We've had discussion. Are we ready for the vote?
Yes, no further discussion for me.
Okay, previous roll. Hearing no objection, motion carries. Next, on our agenda, we have those properties, those offers that fall under option renewals. Option renewals are offers request for additional time to complete projects due to construction delays, funding, et cetera, on options that are near expiration. Offerers must display proof of consistent progress to receive renewals of options and extension of time. First, under this category, are the parcels listed in Exhibit A offered by Better Family Life? I move to approve and accept the option renewal of $75,000 as an 18-month option with closing contingent upon the approval of plans, budget, and financing.
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous roll, hearing no objection, motion carries. Have no NS offers at this time. Next category we have are those donations. Under the category of donations, we have one parcel under donation. And donations are parcels which consist of unoccupied ground or structures owned by constituents who desire to donate due to no longer wanting the property or they are incapable of maintaining the upkeep. The donation is entered into the LRA inventory and sold using the LRA process. Item number 27, 4446 Bessie. Offered by Craig Arnold. I move to accept this donation.
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous roll, hearing no objection, motion carries. Next category. Are properties under the heading of miscellaneous. Miscellaneous items are requested changes from the original board decision. These may include a change of in-use, name change, et cetera. The request must go before the board for consideration. The one item we have under this category, item number 28. The property address is 5538 St. Louis Avenue. And it is presented by Metropolitan Sewer District. Move to accept.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous roll, hearing no objection, motion carries. And it appears that we have one additional item here. Item under J, deferral. This particular item, number 29, at 2834 North Brand from St. Louis Kettle Corn. This offer was deferred from June 22nd. And we are now taking it up to consideration, given the information that we have. I move to reject the offer due to future potential development. Do you have a second?
I would like to take this up with the full board. I mean, it's gone on this long and we have had some changeover in the board, so I think it would, deliberations would be most suited to all three of us discussing.
Okay. Given that, I will withdraw my motion and I'll make a new motion.
Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Brown. Point of information as you make your decision. Where this property is located, you all may be aware that there is a large-scale development effort underway. That is the Great Rivers Greenway project that is moving forward. And the community organization is also exploring business strategy opportunities in the neighborhood planning process. As the JBO neighborhood is within the neighborhood planning process to bring forward a plan for adoption and the planning commission. And they are thoughtfully looking at that corridor to support potentially housing density as well as business opportunity that are larger scale. And so I wanted to provide that information that the community is currently in deliberation about properties along that corridor and how they might be better activated to support the economic revitalization of that corridor. There are other investments being made with the Boys and Girls Club, as well as I forget the STO folks up there, I don't get the name right now. But so there's a lot of activity and community involvement around what are best uses along that corridor as that greenway is being developed and is actually moving forward. Just information we have, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Your vote.
So I withdrew my original motion. Do you have enough information at this point, Commissioner? Given the new information that we've been presented with by Director Lance?
I, I just feel it's a discussion that the full board needs to have is all. So until, I would, I would strongly prefer to defer until which time is Commissioner Arnold can be present.
Okay. Thank you. So there's motion on the table. It's been moved, it's been second to defer. Call for previous roll, hearing no objection, motion carries. And that concludes our offer. Next, on our agenda, we have resolution. And I'd like to turn the floor over to Director Knuckles to give us some background on the resolution.
Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Bowe, thank you for the opportunity to bring forward to you. I have two resolutions today. This first resolution, 23-LRA-195 is a resolution authorizing LRA to enter into service agreements for lawn maintenance and debris services for the LRA beautification and vacant properties program. The resolution authorizes LRA to enter into service agreements to not exceed a total of $250,000 for each contractor for lawn maintenance and debris removal services for the SLRF, SLFRF, Funded Land Reutilization Authority Beautification Vacant Program. There's a good information, amount of information provided to you all. But this program was designed and identifying an opportunity for LRA to pilot an opportunity for us to do better at maintaining the parcel in our stewardship. We're leveraging these funds that have been brought before this body in the past where you all, you all have approved the receipt of those funds, approved the moving forward of sub-recipient agreement, and moving, approved moving forward with the RFP for this program. And this is us following that, closing that loop and bringing contractors that we would like to move forward with to begin those services. The program has been identified very thoughtfully of where we identify where we have 50% more ownership of assets on any given block. And then the second largest owner would be vacant privately-held parcels for us to begin to transform the lived experience for residents who move about our city and not having to address some of the debris that we see on our inventory as well as other parcels. And so this resolution is seeking your support to secure these services for mowing, trimming, edging, debris cleanup, weed control if necessary, and pruning. This program is also designed to allow these services to be provided during what we call the off-season with the intent of addressing tall grass and debris. So that when the growing season starts in March or April, we will have a little better control of these parcels within this pilot program to allow us to accelerate better maintenance of these parcels as we move forward. And so the list of contractors are there, but I will just name them publicly. Helping Hands Consultants, Jenkins &amp; Sons Lawn Care LLC, as well as Eli's L Multiservice Inc. These are organizations that have responded to the RFQ and RFP. And we seek to move forward to begin to provide these services for the great city of the city of St. Louis. I offer you all to ask any questions or points of clarification to secure your support to move this resolution forward.
Thank you.
So just one question on the, the weed prevention. We talk a lot about environmental racism on the St. Louis Board, you know, lead in our waters and our, and our school fences. I want to make sure that we are doing due diligence, that we are not putting any toxins near neighbors in our community, particularly where those vacant parcels are highly concentrated on the north side. Do we have any guarantees for the safety of these pesticides, the spraying procedures? I know that's no pen intended, getting a little bit into the weeds of operations, but it is important when we're designating these decisions that we're going by a guiding policy that is in alignment with the economic justice plan as well as what is morally and socially right for our neighbors.
Commissioner Bowe, I greatly appreciate the diligence, but I actually live and breathe the Economic Justice Action Plan 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. And our efforts to put quality controls about the environmental implications of this program has been thoughtfully considered, as well as there may not be any herbicides being used because I have not had a chance to see those specific items. If I don't see them, they would not be authorized to use any pesticides during this program. So upon observation of materials that any contractor is attempting to use, an assessment will be made of the environmental safety and soundness of those pesticides, if at all, before they actually can use anything on parcels in our stewardship. But I definitely appreciate your thoughtfulness. We are thoughtfully, as a part of the other work we're doing with LRA, being proactive in the stewardship of our inventory, as well as understanding all the environmental implications of all of our actions and decisions as we move forward.
Is anything like that in the MOU with, or the proposals from the respondents regarding the pesticides that they know that? Do they know that they need to consult and receive approval prior to applying anything like that?
So yes, ma'am, that is within the agreement that we will have in the contract. The contracts are not before this body, but this is authorizing us to move into contracts. And the contracts will reflect anything necessary to protect the decision-making of your body and more importantly, the operation of L R A.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for the question.
Thank you. There's no further discussion. I move to accept resolution number twenty-three L R A dash one ninety-five. Do you have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Previous role, hearing no objection, motion carries. Next resolution, we have resolution twenty-three L R A one ninety-six, Director.
Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Vow, thank you again for the opportunity to present to you resolution number two-three dash L R A dash one ninety-six. This resolution is approving option of property to L C R A Holdings Corporation for C D A Development Program. The approval to option these properties listed, and there is an attachment commissioner that identifies the properties that have been identified that are in C D A stewardship to move them to L C R A Holdings. To funds, the funds to acquire the properties came from the L R A scattered site acquisition. So L R A's background information, L R A purchased properties for the Community Development Administration and its predecessor C D A for variety of activities at the request of Neighborhood Housing Corporation with the approval of the Executive Director of Community Development Agency under the C D B G Grant Program. And so this allows us to move forward. The term, the eternal option contract shall be for a period of five years commencing on the date of approval by the Board of Commissioners of L R A. Unless L R A gives L C R A Holdings written notice of his intent to terminate the option at least twenty-four hours prior to the expiration. The term of the option period, the option shall automatically renew for a subsequent five-year period. At the time duration, the L C R A Holdings may assign the option to C D A selected developer for one dollar in other or whatever amount is deemed appropriate by C D A. And the S L D C staff and L R A will close the transaction. The option approved by this resolution will be comparable in terms to options to operation impact. And so if you all may be aware, operation impact was an effort that has operated in the past. And we have used this vehicle to move stewardship of parcels to help support the acceleration of economic development. Whereas L C R A Holdings Corporation acts as a proactive partner for us to aggregate properties and actually support and accelerate economic development. And so we're seeking your support and approval to move forward in this process, which is almost a standard procedure for us. But want to make sure that we actually provide any questions, I mean, provide any answers to questions. And again, the exhibit A lists all the parcels in question for us to be able to address. I'll yield the floor to Commissioner Brown or Commissioner Vow for any questions part of moving on this resolution.
I don't have the exhibit list in email, so I don't have it in front of me. But I do have some concern, given all of the ways that this land has been mishandled in the past, that it gives the impression that we are trying to obfuscate and deny accountability and transparency by saying, oh, we're going to shuffle these over here to this other public body that's another public-private partnership that's going to then get them into the hands of certain developers that may be on a preferred list. So it gives me some pause. If you could give me some assurances of transparency and some accountability guide rails, I think that would be a little bit more reassuring for me.
Commissioner Vow, I definitely want to take an opportunity, and this is a public forum for us to speak truth and transparency, that this is not about secrecy or providing any pathway for someone to do work. The C D B G program has created challenges for these properties. And there is resources that are tagged to these properties that make it challenging to move forward. This is being done in partnership with C D A, not a move for L R A or L C R A to take on liberties with parcels. These parcels have challenges with them that come from some decisions that were made prior to anyone in this room or on the commission or even staffed at S L D C at this moment in time. And so this is our effort to continue to remove burdens for challenging properties in partnership with our Community Development Administration and being able to collaborate to make these things move forward. And so I do want to take the opportunity to ensure not only this body, but any public person listening to this forum, that this is not a resolution to subvert any level of accountability. It actually provides a higher level of accountability for us to put these things in the hands of our partners to be able to move work forward that L R A may not be the best suited partner to move forward on these properties based upon the challenges that come with them from the C D B G program.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Going back to you, Commissioner Brown.
Thank you. Given the information that has been presented, I move that we accept resolution number twenty-three L R A one ninety-six. Do you have a second? Commissioner Vow.
No second at this time. I just got a document from Ms. Strong I'm trying to look at.
Do you have further questions that Director Knuckles can answer?
I think I just got an email I'm trying to check right now from Ms. Strong.
I think Commissioner Vow, she is attempting to make sure you have the inventory of parcels.
I obviously do not have time to digest that right now, even if the email does come through. I got a notification, but I can't open it. So it would be my strong preference to defer this until such time as all three board members can be present and until there is more time to fully think through the implications of this, as well as the list of concerned properties.
Director, is there a timeline?
Commissioner Brown and Commissioner Vow, I'll respectfully yield. This is time sensitive, but I also do not want this body, or more specifically myself as the director of real estate, to be considered as someone who's not willing to allow this body to make decisions on its own accord. So I will yield and allow you all to deliberate on this and will bring this back from this body in the November meeting of twenty twenty-three. October, I'm sorry. No, bring it back because October now. Oh, yeah, October, this is, yeah, September, yes. Thank you. In the October meeting for twenty twenty-three.
I withdraw my original motion and I move to defer this decision to allow for additional consideration deferred to the October meeting. Do you have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, previous role, hearing no objection, motion carries.
Commissioner Brown, if I speak. Commissioner Brown, Commissioner Vow. If there are questions about this resolution, please do not hesitate to send those questions via email. So then we can actually gather any detailed information that you may feel you need as a body to make a thoughtful decision to support this resolution moving forward and supporting the operational capacity of L C R A Holdings and the work of L R A moving forward. So please send those questions and concern and I will make sure to provide you any follow-up information for you to make a solid decision.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
That concludes our items on our agenda. The next commission meeting is scheduled for October the twenty-fifth. With that information, I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.
Do we need a motion to adjourn? Or can we do it by acclamation?
I call for a motion. I move to adjourn the meeting.
Seconded and by acclamation.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Your attendance.